...for all our leaving seniors. Sad to say I have not received one yet, but fingers crossed that comes through. On May 30th, I mentioned this last time, but the ICCA, the International Cultural Club Association, had their heat show. I know a lot of students went and showed off their culture, and it's very nice to see such the diverse communities at Piscataway High School and seeing that being shown off. And last but not least, our club said won $10,000 at Six Flags. From the New Jersey Brain Alliance, also hosted and sponsored by NJN, for our campaign, as you all know, P way you know, drive safe or slow. And we are so proud to be a new club and also winning that much money. Three people, three schools are selected, and I know they were very happy because we're a New Year's club and just first time even participating in this campaign. I believe there were 60 schools, so we are once again very honored. So that concludes my report. Yeah.
Well, now I get to have my little report. Who, well Tyler, number one, we want to thank you for becoming our junior representative. You have done an immaculate job of providing information, details, allowing the board members to get involved, to know what's going on at the school as well as things that are going on in the community from the school. You are a spokesperson for Piscataway. You are a picture of what can be if you put the time in and if you put the effort in, and you want it. Key words is want it. The position you're in, you've wanted it, you've owned it, you've claimed it, and you're working. And I appreciate that about you and looking forward to you being a senior representative next year. Tomdi, two years with the smile and the happiness and the glee and all the rest that comes with it. It has been an incredible whirlwind having you as the representative of the high school. When you first came in, you were a little shy, a little quiet, but then all of a sudden the personality popped and you were ready to go. We have seen you grow, we have seen you glow, but most importantly, we want to see just where you're going to go. You have spread your wings and you have taken on flight and you are going to go places that I don't even think you even envisioned yet. What you have done as a student of Piscataway is incredible. The amount of time, the amount of volunteering you did, the amount of clubs you were involved in, but yet you stayed under the radar up until the very end. I think you thought we didn't pay attention to all you were doing. We did. Your family, I know, is incredibly proud of you because what you have achieved is not something easily done, but you wanted it, you went for it, and you did it. This is a bittersweet moment, this last meeting with you, but most importantly, it's a moment that you earned, that you deserve, and we as the board, we just want to thank you. We want to tell you what a pleasure it has been and we want you to know if you need anything, if you need our help, you need words of encouragement, call Nancy, she got you. Okay? She got you! There's no doubt in my mind, she got you. But so do the rest of us. But what I do want to tell you is keep doing what you're doing, it's working for you. You never look stressed, and to have AP classes and all the stuff you were doing and never look stressed, oh, you're good. You're very good. But again, it was time management, it was an action plan, and executing it, and you did all of that. Job well done. Job well done. T and T! So, you know, we can't let you walk out of here empty-handed now. Come on. Now, I'm gonna tell Dayton, I'm not feeling this blue bad for you, but let that slide.
Wait a minute, I have something for you. She said, don't go. Okay, first I'm gonna ask you, where's Hunterdon County, Ms. Tomdi?
Oh, no, no, close to Bridgewater. Close to Bridgewater. I remember.
Remember at a dinner together and she asked me where I lived or something, and I said I'm in Hunterdon County. And what was your response?
Where is Hunterdon County?
I've been asking myself that question for 35 years. Okay, in Hunterdon, this is a big deal. The Flumnington Fudge Shop. So I went there. Thank you so much. We've only been together two months, but thank you. And you, I would not forget either. Right? You got the blue ribbon. You're good kids and you represent our educational community beautifully. You truly do.
Two more finals in check, y'all, hon. Tyler?
Yeah, yeah.
Mm-hmm. Yes, the Lord.
And you had a good time at the prom, huh?
Yes. Oh, my God, it was the best. I loved the prom.
I'd like to, yeah, this may, I think you go. Um, I'd like to introduce Mr. and Mrs. Now, I wrote it down phonetically. I'm not making those mistakes. Narava. Mr. and Mrs. Narava and Tomdi's older sister. So, thank you.
Now, this is the first time they ever got a shout-out, so they're probably very happy. So thank you.
Uh, so because of you two and your reports, I'm crossing off SAD $10,000 grant. Uh, Tomdi got a scholarship from the Middlesex County Administrators Association of Superintendents. So congratulations to you. And when Ms. Cherry talks, uh, it hits my heart. So I would not try to add on to her kind and relevant words, but as an interim superintendent, um, it takes a lot to impress me. You both are fine young people, and I wish you the best, and I hope you succeed in your journey in medicine. I know you will. And not impressed right now with my medical field. So go for it and get it. And on behalf of the entire school district, congratulations. Um, you'll see us maybe in September. I'll be here, but I'm here for you. All right, thank you. Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Okay, next, we're going to do the president's report. My president's report for June the 12th, 2025. Congratulations to all our Piscataway High School seniors who were on it last week at our senior awards and scholarship ceremonies. These students worked extremely hard this year and throughout their four years of high school and were rewarded with a wide range of well-deserved awards in all subject areas, from science, math, English, to ROTC, World Language and Arts. Students all collected a total of well over $100,000 in scholarship money to start themselves off on the right foot as they leave PHS. We are so proud of these shining stars, and all of their names are listed on our district website to help celebrate their accomplishments. As this is our last meeting of the school year, I want to congratulate all our students for your dedication, hard work throughout these 10 months. I'm conditionally continually impressed by your academic achievements, creativity in the arts and athletics, and selfishness in service to our community. Congratulations to the class of 2025 as you begin your journey beyond PHS and to all our students who are moving on to a new set of challenges and celebrations in 25, 26 school year. Enjoy your summer. And that concludes my president's report. Oh, one other thing. I want to acknowledge and let it be known about Dr. Tom Connors. Dr. Connors has been re-elected to New Jersey School Board, Vice President of Finance. He continues to work for the good of students in the state of New Jersey with his knowledge, his expertise, but most importantly, his desire to understand and explain to anyone who's willing to take the time to listen. Anything there is to know about the budget, about finance, about life finance, fiscal fi- fiscal responsibility, you need to know, you want to know, reach out to Dr. Tom. He got your cover.
The formula, the funding formula.
Congratulations again, Dr. Tom, on your reappearance at PHS Finance. And that concludes my report. Your turn.
You love to toss it to me. All right, good evening, everyone, and, uh, since I've been here, I've tried to give you a view into the role of the superintendent. This position manages about 22 systems within the district, and all these systems revolve around our children. And as an outsider who's been here for a couple of months, you have a very, very fine district. Your theme of inspiration inspires me every day by the dedication of the people. Tonight, I would like to offer you some information, and since it is the last board meeting of the year, um, I'd like to also offer some acknowledgement of the fine work that's done in our district. First and foremost, board, thank you. I thought, I think you're so authentic in your approach and in what you do, and I value and appreciate it. I, I truly do. Uh, this month, um, I'm inspired by past Piscataway. And when I come into work in the morning, the quotes on the sign, "Thank you, Gary," always set the tone for the week. This month is Pride Month. We have a lot of activities going on in our high school and our middle school. Please check the report that was posted during the week and, uh, the Special Olympics. We had students in middle school and the high school participate and also students in our sale program. No child is underserved in Piscataway. Every child is treated as an individual. Our student representatives, you saw these fine young people who keep us informed from their framework, not ours. Um, the structure is very, 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 very developed in, um, Piscataway. I want to first thank the community. The mayor, Waller, uh, he and I have been in a couple of activities in the district. We bumped into each other at the Strings Concert at Knackamack, and I want to thank the citizens of Piscataway because your value base is shared by your school district. We appreciate it. Our district is managed by our SO- SROs, the maintenance department. I can go in any building here at any time, and somebody is working in the building. And you transport, we have an enrollment of over 7,000 students. Transportation, we've had two incidents that have been addressed. So thank you, transportation. And now I'd like to go to our teachers. Today, we had an excellent presentation honoring our Teachers of the Year, our Support Staff of the Year, and we had the quartet from the high school, and Benjamin Chen wrote the song that they performed. Come on. Don't doubt this, uh, school district. Uh, we also acknowledged our Teacher of the Year, and our administrators know their teachers. When you go in the schools, which I'm fortunate to do, you are engaged. You don't walk by a classroom and see inactivity. Our teachers are highly engaged in our district. The administrators, I'm working with them. I enjoy meeting with them about their educational leadership, and they run and they are the leaders in their building. The cabinet, thank you very much. You accepted me immediately. You didn't have a choice, but you accepted me immediately. Dr. Baskerville, you and I have had some in-depth discussions, don't you think? Dr. Lotman, I adopted you the first time I met you. Ms. Pondgrants, what can I say? That agenda tonight. Look at the positions on that agenda. This is the first district I've been in where I'm not under pressure for hiring until the week before school, and I have to call a board meeting. How's that? Job fairs, outreach, well done. And now we go to Mr. Olivera, our business administrator. This gentleman got the Award of Excellence. Wait a minute, I don't want to say it wrong. What is, oh, here it is. Certificate of Excellence.
Eight years in a row?
Eight years in a row. I've been in 11 districts, and I hate to tell you some good news or bad news. He's already started the budget for next year. So, Mr. Olivera, I recognize and value your work, and I, you were well-deserved, your whole department of that certificate of excellence.
And financial reporting.
And financial reporting. The other structures that service our children. This is all about our children. Mr. Toma and Mr. Gonzalez represent our formal organization. The dialogue is always open. Even if I don't want to do it, it is always open, and I want to, I want to thank you both publicly for your support. Um, our district services kids, but if you were in my position, what I witnessed during a week, and when the board gets my mileage report this month, you're gonna be shocked. I don't even know how I do it sometimes. Move-up ceremony, Strings Concert, SAD. You ready? What happened yesterday? And I invited them to come to a board meeting in July. I went, Ms. Colleen and I, Ms. Pondgrants, and I went to, I brought the paper, the molecular biology research project. H research. But what was frightening about it, there were, it gets this, and then when I sit and, so what are your plans? At, in my generation, we had plans. College, Catherine Gibbs, Secretarial, everybody focuses about the children. And let's not forget our pre, I have to acknowledge that. The enrollment we have in our pre, what every single person in this community has built. Taxes, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Everybody's under, everybody's under pressure financially. Today, pressure financially. Today, Ms. Edmondson, Ms. Edmondson, I don't think I forgot anyone. I took time trying to make the, I don't think I forgot anyone. I took time trying to make the list. If I did, person I must acknowledge. So as Dr. Roberto, thank you so much for the opportunity. Thank you so much for the opportunity to witness, your need to witness your history and your present, and history and your present, and where you're going in the future. Thank you so much. Where you're going in the future. Thank you so much.
Only because required by law to do this.
This is our age before beauty, so we decided I go in first here. In December and in June, we're reporting here on statistics for the period from September 1st to December 31st. There are, you have before you, there are 22 investigations, seven of which were confirmed to substantiate HIV. It requires us to accumulate a lot of data so that we can pinpoint our resources on where there were actually problems. The good news is that we are not seeing any broad patterns of misbehavior, HIV. Most of these are one-off incidents.
I'd like to present our district's semi-annual SSDS report. As a reminder, SSDS stands for Student Safety Data System. We're talking about the time period from July 2024, School Day, September 1, 2, 7. From this timeframe, uh, you're looking at, last year, we had 52, um, SSDS report incidents. This year, only 32. So from 32 to 52, I'm happy to report that's almost 39% decrease from this time period. Starting with 14 incidents, which represents a decrease of 22.2% of the 14 incidents. We report 11 fights and three threats in behavior regulation. So I just didn't want to make sure that. Four incidents were three thefts and one trespass. Again, I don't know how it falls under the vandalism umbrella, but that's what the state calls it. Um, of the three thefts, we would not have been able to investigate or. This incident was possession only, uh, no, no use, thank God. So it was just a, it's still a very serious matter, but it was possession. And the last category we have substance abuse, go from 23 to 13. Based on our court conduct, but they always see their, their school counselor and/or their, um, the school substance abuse counselor for as long as it's needed. It's not a one-off, see later, good luck. The support is ongoing. That department, they were able to, you know, investigate, make sure everything was safe, and then, you know, give it back to us to, to go ahead and handle. So as I always do, um, as a, Dr. Connors is a lover of meth, I always like to. You compare that to the amount of incidents, which again is 32. Uh, you calculate that, you have point 0000, so four zeros, 616% of our school days require. Of the experiences and, um, workshops that we have available, uh, to all our students every single year is we highlight our Week of Respect. We highlight our School Violence Awareness Week. Updates. We have our DEI monthly celebrations. We have character education programs. We have assemblies on mental health awareness, social, emotional learning, and violence prevention. Uh, we work hand-in-hand with our community outreach, uh, program. That was a goal of mine back in December, December. I'm happy to report that that goal became a reality. Uh, the community outreach was able to present at both our four and five buildings, all four of our K3 building students as well. So I was very fortunate to, uh, get more, um, uh, educational presentations in front of our students, and those presentations covered cyberbullying, social media awareness, as well as drug awareness.
Only because required by law to do this.
I know.
This is our, it's age before beauty, so we decided I'd go in first here. In December and in June, we're reporting here on statistics for the period from September 1st to December 31st. There are, you have before you, there are 22 investigations, seven of which were confirmed to substantiate HIV. It requires us to accumulate a lot of data so that we can pinpoint our resources on where there were actually problems. The good news is that we are not seeing any broad patterns of misbehavior HIV. Most of these are one-off incidents.
I'd like to present our district's semi-annual SSDS report. As a reminder, SSDS stands for Student Safety Data System. We're talking about the time period from July 2024, School Day, September 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7. From this timeframe, you're looking at, last year, we had 52 SSDS report incidents. This year, only 32. So, from 32 to 52, I'm happy to report, that's almost 39% decrease from this time period. Starting with 14 incidents, which represents a decrease of 22.2%. Of the 14 incidents, we report 11 fights and three threats in behavior regulation. So, I just didn't want to make sure that. Four incidents were three thefts and one trespass. Again, I don't know how it falls under the vandalism umbrella, but that's what the state calls it. Of the three thefts, we would not have been able to investigate or. This incident was possession only, no use, thank God. So, it was just a, it's still a very serious matter, but it was possession. And the last category, we have substance abuse, go from 23 to 13. Based on our court conduct, but they always see their, their school counselor and/or their, the school substance abuse counselor for as long as it's needed. It's not a one-off, see later, good luck. The support is ongoing. That department, they were able to, you know, investigate, make sure everything was safe, and then, you know, give it back to us to go ahead and handle. So, as I always do, as a, like Dr. Connors, a lover of meth, I always like to. You compare that to the amount of incidents, which again is 32. You calculate that, you have point 0000, so four zeros, 616% of our school days require. Of the experiences and workshops that we have available to all our students every single year is we highlight our Week of Respect. We highlight our School Violence Awareness Week. We have our DEI monthly celebrations. We have character education programs. We have assemblies on mental health awareness, social emotional learning, and violence prevention. We work hand-in-hand with our community outreach program. That was a goal of mine back in December, December. I'm happy to report that that goal became a reality. The community outreach was able to present at both our four and five buildings, all four of our K3 building students as well. So, I was very fortunate to get more educational presentations in front of our students. And those presentations covered cyberbullying, social media awareness, as well as drug awareness. Prevention depending on the age. So, it was, we're very lucky to be able to work with them. We're very fortunate. But we're always willing to, you know, do more. We're always doing whatever it takes to make sure our students feel safe, feel welcome, feel at home in our schools. That being said, thank you for listening. Any questions I could answer? Yes, ma'am.
You mentioned.
Yes. Yeah.
I just wanted to clarify.
She loves, she loves working with our school districts. She loves coming to our. Our buildings, I will tell you this, the guest speakers that, you know, present to our kids, sing, it doesn't matter what school it is, sing our kids praises, say, wow. And I do a lot of presentations, your kids are great. So, I definitely want to report that to you all as well.
Thank you.
Thanks so much for your time.
Thank you. Yes. Hi, I'm Nancy Salgado Cowan. And my pronouns are she/her. And I would like to say, be it resolved, that the following motions identified as items A through H be approved as presented.
Second, Mrs. Secretary, can you take the role?
Dr. Connors?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Dr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Rivers?
Yes.
Smith? Ms. Stafford?
Yes.
Mrs. Salgado Cowan?
Yes.
Yes.
Questions, Carrie.
Committee reports, Nancy, CCC, R.
Yeah. Culture, Climate, and Community Relations Committee met on Tuesday, May 20th, 2025 to discuss positive messaging, community partnerships, and wellness initiatives. Positive messaging, we partner, you know, Gary's part of our committee. And he comes and he shared a slideshow of all the monthly themes, the quotes, social media posts, and the marquee images from the end of March through mid-May. The April themes were Autism Awareness, and Acceptance Month, and New Jersey Jewish Heritage Month. In May, the themes were Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. And upcoming themes included Pride for June at the high school and the middle schools. Community partnerships, the reason I was interested in knowing who Dr. Lotman was partnering with specifically because our committee works with different partners as well. So, 75 girls from the Piscataway High School Academy Program participated in Women's Future Leadership Academy on March 21st at Rutgers Business School. A group of boys from each of our middle schools participated in Rutgers, in Rutgers and Alpha, Phi Alpha Fraternity Youth Summit on March 28th, also at Rutgers School of Engineering. They engaged in hands-on workshops led by Rutgers School of Engineering faculty and students. The PHS Future Education Associate, also known as FEA, received training from our Junior Achievement Partnership on March 19th to lead the High School Heroes Program. The program involves high school students going to each district elementary school to teach age-appropriate lessons on financial literacy. If you guys recall, in the past, before we had the, this new group of Piscataway Future Education Associations, it was just the Junior Achievements students that were actually going into the middle schools. So, it's an expansion of a program that we already had existing, now going down into our elementary schools. About 130 students took part in the Financial Reality Fair at the PHS, hosted by volunteers from the Affinity Federation of Federal Credit Union. The participants were identified from our What's Next Initiative focusing on students who have indicated they may not be attending college. Students received a hands-on experience about budgeting, managing life expenses by engaging in a scenario as an adult where they were each given a job and a salary. So, the Culture, Climate, and Community Relations met in person this last time. We like to kick off our year in person and end our year with an in-person meeting. And we shared different cultural foods with each other, and we have a really nice time.
Good.
Thank you, Ms. Salgado Cowan.
Thank you.
Definitely. Before I start running my mouth. Thank you. Maybe we'll get this cough under control. The Curriculum Committee met on Monday, June 2nd, 2025 to discuss the PHS Engineering Capstone Course, Social Studies Mandates, Science of Reading, and Visual and Performing Arts Year in Review. Engineering Capstone Presentation, PHS Students and Ms. Robin Kaye. Three groups in the PHS Engineering Programs, Capstone Course, presented year-long projects they recently completed. They researched a problem that impacts society and community, applying everything they had learned about the engineering design process through their years in high school. They presented their problem to industrial engineers, followed by developing a solution, but a final presentation to judges of the problem, research, design, diagrams, prototypes, and solutions. The three projects were Home Office Power Monitor, a high chair for use in restaurants, and compression socks. I got to tell you, those three presentations were incredible. Because to see the compression socks and the apparatus they put on it in order for people who can't bend over or necessarily get their foot up on their leg to get a sock on was impressive, and I was thoroughly impressed by it. The high chair that they created, I know everybody's seen those little wooden high chairs in the restaurants where kids can just tumble out. They put an adapter on it where the kids would actually sit in it and be secure, where they would not have to worry about tipping over or, you know, how some kids start climbing out and they fall backwards. And most importantly, the monitoring of the surge of energy, where we all know we have kids who have extension cords, who have extension cords that have plugs plugged into the extension cord in the outlet, and it looks like it's about to be a wildfire, set loose cord to the cords. The device they created that had multiple sides on it that would allow you to plug into it without an overload, but yet restrict it from having excessive amount of voltage going through it, was mind-blowing. So, it would eliminate having electrical fire starting in an outlet or in an extension cord because of the overload and a burnout in the actual extension cord. Those students impressed me, ma'am. They, they did some real work, and it was great. NJ DOE, Social Studies Mandate, AAPI, Holocaust. The Holocaust Crosswalk shares the topics that are required by state mandates. Teachers will visit Kane University Holocaust Recourse Center to explore teaching strategies from grades six through 12. Professional development has been provided to grades six through 12. Teachers in connection with AAPI, NJ, and a workshop will be shared with grades four and five teachers in the fall. Information is available on the district curriculum website. Science and Reading was presented by Dr. Baskerville. The district will have workshops at McGraw-Hill in September or October for parents about the new English Language Art Curriculum. Visual and Performing Arts End-of-the-Year Wrap-Up was done by Rebecca Stalacki. Rebecca shared a short video recap of the entire year in Piscataway Arts. It was also shared with the district via email, text, and social media. To stay in touch, follow Peewee Arts on Instagram. Next committee report would be Fiscal Planning and Operations, Dr. Connors.
Thank you, Madam President. Quickly, before I get into my report, I just wanted to say that Superintendent's Report, President's Report, where we are right now didn't come about overnight. And we do a five-year strategic plan. And what you're seeing in terms of some of these reports is a result of that strategic plan. And one of those objectives was to take advantage of the proximity to Rutgers University. And to see our seniors, you mentioned, you know, being able to do, you know.
Molecular.
Molecular biology, be able, and at the same time, we saw a lot of eighth graders leaving our, our district and going off to specific types of schools. So, we formed the academies. So, what you're hearing now is a result of the Engineering Academy where in that competition, where our engineering seniors were presenting their projects, some of the people in the crowd were graduate students from engineering from Rutgers. So, we're taking advantage of that proximity, and our, our district is benefiting from that. And just on the ELA side, a lot of students leave here and the first thing they have to take in college is the, the writing. And so, that particular writing, expository writing is difficult for a lot of freshmen going in there. So, we actually went to Rutgers, and they come here and actually teach expository writing here. So, so, a lot of this is, just didn't happen overnight, but thank you for highlighting that and seeing the result of a lot of the work that we, you know, we've done over the years.
You're always on the move.
Yep. Now, the Fiscal Planning and Operations Committee, you know, David Olivera, love working with David Olivera. We met last night. So, this is fresh last from last night. We went over the budget. Budget update was that the 2024-25 budget continues the trend towards a lower fund balance than previous years. So, the Board Resolutions authorizing deposits to capital reserve and maintenance reserve remain on the agenda, but this year, it's reduced amounts. Facility capital projects, we get a lot going on. Piscataway High School woodshop dust collection, closeout paperwork is being processed. Piscataway High School interior alterations of the high school, demolition in the media center, DLC in the, the nurse's office nearly complete, installation of metal wall framing has been begun. Acoustical upgrades, that's the bleacher demolition in the Piscataway High School Anthony Gym began on June 10th. Work on the administration building scheduled to begin on June 18th. Piscataway High School, this is the whole complex, the 910 and the 1112. There is a PA intercom clock system that's, and that works beginning, expected to begin in July. Solar panel decommissioning, contractual paperwork is complete, the contractors filing permits. Fellowship Farms, which is this building, preschool alterations. District Administration reviewed preliminary designs with Spiesel Architects. Another design meeting will occur with Spiesel in the summer. The project remains on schedule for construction for December 2025 through August 2026. And quickly on this is that we get state aid money called preschool state aid. A lot of other districts don't get as much as we do because what it's contingent upon is having the facilities to equip the preschoolers in those facilities. So, the business office has done a fantastic job over the years in expanding that. We have On the Pond, we have On the Lake, you know, the Diocese of Metatchin, those Roca schools, you know, they're no longer there, you know, operating. So, we did deals with them, so that's where that comes from. And then we have on New Brunswick Road that, there. But what we're, this, we're taking advantage of state money, where 60% that, that we. where it's sixty percent that we pay in and forty percent from the state, and that is to expand this building here to put more, about a hundred and thirty, possibly a hundred and fifty students in there, preschool students. So that's fantastic work, thinking about the futures for our preschool. And believe me, other towns, they have the lotteries for getting, preschool lotteries for getting into kindergarten, not in Piscataway. Painting services, Promethean board installations. A walkthrough is completed with the painting contractor. Work will begin at Arbor on June nineteenth. Painting of five buildings will go through the end of August. The Promethean boards are due to be delivered to four schools the week of June twenty-third. Move of existing projector boards will begin on June nineteenth. If anybody's been to Grandview School, they'll see in the classrooms the Promethean boards. I mean, everybody, everything these days is touch the screen. So now we have all these Promethean boards, and we're right up to the times. Ethel Road, Department of Tomorrow Protection Remediation. Mr. Olivera updated the committee on monitoring and remediation for the DEP-designated sites at Ethel Road. After consultation with our environmental engineer, Mr. Olivera submitted the annual remediation funding source notification. The next one's a great one, copy machine print management contract. The district copier lease expired during the 2024-25 year. Proposal was solicited from Atlantic to Morrow's Office to replace sixty-two existing copiers with sixty-eight new copiers, including the new paper cut print management system. Each K through twelve school receives at least one additional copier, and the main office copier will be a color copier. Paper cut print management will reduce wasteful printing by printing jobs only when staff members add a copy machine, and will allow the district to reduce printers and continue its earth-friendly initiatives. In other words, they'll get a key fob, and you'll have your job on the key fob, so you can go to anywhere and print out your job. So that's very efficient. Five-year lease with the monthly payment reduction from twenty-two thousand. And there is, so there's a monthly payment reduction from twenty-two thousand two hundred and sixty-three to twenty-one thousand two hundred and fifteen. Food service, food service equipment bids were opened on May twenty-eighth for new servicing line equipment in the Shore Cafeteria. Resolution recommending the award of a contracted Denver Equipment Company is included in tonight's agenda. Food service consultant, Mr. Olivera is recommending, I love this name of this company, Ed, like advocate, to be appointed to provide food service consulting services. And we're hoping, David, that one of these lines open up, say, one of these new ones, you'll be in the picture again. I'm bringing up the food.
Several of them.
Several of them. New Jersey School Business Legislative Update. Dr. Connors and me discussed budget language changes that impacted school funding for 2025-2026. I would be remiss if I just did not say that next year statewide is going to be a very
Challenging.
challenging year.
It's gonna be.
State aid, you know, it's always challenging. We're doing okay? But right now, in the Connecticut, in the Connecticut, in the New Jersey Legislature, the governor has to approve appropriations bill that the legislature finishes by June thirtieth. In that bill, they need to codify some of the budget, one-year budgetary language of the state funding formula. Or we will go back to the funding formula that we've been, that's under law. The changes this year, there were like some three-year averaging property valuations, district income, et cetera. There was, there was a lot that was done so that we didn't have big-time losers and big-time winners of state aid. They did a six percent increase maximum and a three percent decrease minimum. We were fortunate because we got, we were in a three percent decrease, so we only had that eight-hundred-thousand-dollar hit. If that budget, one-year budget language wasn't in there, our uncapped loss of our twenty-seven million in state aid would have been thirteen million dollars. We would have lost half our school aid. So I, we're urging the legislatures to keep this language going for another year or codify it, and that's going on. What we're fortunate is that David was the Legislative Committee Chair of the New Jersey Association of School Business Officials, NJ ASBO. I happen to be the vice president, one of the vice presidents for New Jersey School Boards. So together, we always look down the road for what's coming in terms of legislation. And further along, Mr. Olivera is working with the New Jersey Association, the ASBO, to schedule meetings, even federally, with federal legislatures at the ASBO International Legislative Advocacy Conference. I, too, also, in January of every year, I've done it for the last three years, accompany New Jersey School Boards Executive Committee to National School Board Association Federal Advocacy Institute. And we go and we visit people such as Mickey Sherrill, our legislators, et cetera, to let them know about concerns on public education. Business Office Update, Investment Account. The committee reviewed the current balance of the May twenty-twenty-five NJ asset rebate management statement and the current interest rates. Another great initiative in this past year, so this money can be put on, into, for projects. And this past year, in this account, we have raised almost eight-hundred-thousand dollars just this past twenty-four, twenty-five year. Shared Service Agreement. Mr. Olivera reviewed the proposed shared service agreement with Timothy Christian School for Use of the District's Mechanic. That's, and we're always looking for shared services. Shipping Cost Savings. Mr. Olivera noted the use of bucket distribution to save fourteen thousand dollars on the shipping of materials for a comprehensive knowledge-based literacy program. And the last thing that we've mentioned is, again, you know, been around the state and, you know, there's six hundred school districts, and I visit a lot of counties, and, you know, did eight years in a row for Piscataway. To get the Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting shows not only how we are fiscally responsible, but how transparent we are in the presentation of our financial matters. So the district was awarded that and for 2024 audit report. And, you know, an eight-year pattern, think about this. In the last eight years as well here, we've also won, you know, we're one of the best music communities in the country for music education. So a great job to the administration, great job to everyone, and being focused on the future for the future of the kids at Piscataway.
Very nice.
Very good, Tom.
Thank you.
Program of Minutes, Ms. Rivers?
Be resolved if the following minutes be approved as submitted. This is meeting May eighth, twenty twenty-five, and the executive session, May eighth, twenty twenty-five. Motion?
Second. Fall in favor?
Aye.
Special meeting, May thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. Executive Session, May thirteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Second. Fall in favor?
Aye.
Public comment from the floor. The Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and school matters of the community interest. In support of this position, the law established a period of public comment at every board meeting. Individuals wishing to speak must state their name and address. Comments are limited to three-minute duration, but an individual may speak a second time after all others who wish to speak on the topic have been heard. The board may require that the individuals register to speak. Prior to the beginning of the meeting, participants may submit written material in support of their position. All statements in our questions shall be directed to the presiding officer, and no participant may address or question board members individually. All speakers are required to express themselves in a civil matter with due respect for dignity and privacy rights of others whose legal rights may be affected. Please note, while it is not the board's intention to stifle comments on matters of legitimate concern to the school district community, the public should be aware that if their statement violates the rights of others under the law governing defamation and invasion of privacy, they may face personal liability to injured parties. If speakers are uncertain of their legal ramifications of their comment, the board urges them to seek guidance beforehand from their own legal advisor. Is there anyone in the public session wishing to speak? If so, please come forward, state your name, and just the town that you reside in. You can come to this podium.
Hi, good evening, board members and administrators. First off, I just want to say thank you very much for giving me this time to speak up to you guys. And I do hope that everyone got a little bit of sun because it's cloudy weather in Jersey. My name is Sandy Patel. I live in Evans Avenue in Piscataway, New Jersey. I'm here to bring attention to critical transparency issues in the district public's funded preschool program that are affecting families like mine and undermining trust in the enrollment process. Excuse me, I'm a little nervous. I haven't done like a public speech since twenty years in college, but.
You're just talking to friends.
Yeah. So specifically, the district's preschool registration presentation. I do believe that it lacks essential details in two key areas. The first one is the preschool registration presentation. It vaguely mentions a percentage of seats for families that meet financial eligibility guidelines and a percentage for all families living in Piscataway without actually specifying the total number of seats or exact percentage allocated to each group. This leaves families uncertain about their chances of securing a spot. The presentation includes a slide titled Income Qualifications, but provides no concrete details on the criteria used to determine eligibility. Without clear income thresholds or guidelines, families cannot assess whether they qualify for reserved seats. To me, this creates a black hole of uncertainty, making it difficult for families to navigate in the enrollment process fairly. To address this, I respectfully request that the district take the following actions. One is annually release a report detailing the total number of preschool seats, the number of applications received, and the breakdown of seats allocated to income-qualified families versus general residents. Example, a hundred seats total, sixty for income-eligible, forty for all of the residents. Clearly state the income criteria for eligibility such as families earning below two-hundred percent of the federal property level qualified for reserved seats, and provide a table with income limits by family size. I urge the district to adopt a more transparent process by holding a public draw for application process, similar to the practices taken in other township success, Edison, Old Bridge, and many other New Jersey schools. A public lottery will provide an unbiased, clear method for awarding seats and ensuring every family has an equal opportunity to enroll a child. I believe these steps are essential for restoring some trust and ensuring fairness to the preschool program. I appreciate your attention to this matter, and I really hope that you will consider steps to improve the transparency for the preschool program. I'm confident that with your leadership, Scotty Tancher's can stand for excellence in early childhood. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, dear.
Hi, good evening. My name is Celeste Fiori. I live in Piscataway over in Tanglewood Drives. You may have seen me walking. I walk a lot through town. My pronouns are they/them. If you insist on using an honorific, I use mix, but just please call me Celeste. I am a new volunteer to the Policy Committee of the School Board, so I wasn't here the last meeting that I actually had some input into policy. But I'm actually here to not talk necessarily about policy, but to just talk about some of the things that I was taking a look at when I was on our district website. And I realize that many people don't have a lot of familiarity with they/them pronouns or non-binary people to begin with. But let me, let me stand here and be here as somebody who's over the age of forty, who's non-binary, who's transgender, who's a lawyer. We can all be successful. We all exist. Unfortunately, when I take a look at what is on our district website, it looks like non-binary people don't exist or that we don't recognize them. And I know that that's not the case because we have a very inclusive school district, like all of the good stuff. We love our students. We love every, you know, we love everybody. Unfortunately, when we do things like using really restrictive and non-inclusive binary language, like insisting on saying mister or misses or miss, for some that's, that might be good, but a lot of other industries are moving away from that type of practice and looking and referring to each other as board members or just by their first name. And I, and what does this have to do with the website? Absolutely nothing, except that everything is just he or she. So if we're going to be using pronouns, we can either include they or we can actually write a little bit better, a little bit tighter, and we don't even need to use pronouns. Now, for those of you who are not copy editors or lawyers, maybe that's not, maybe that's not something that one would want to sign up to do. Something that I do, and I do in my practice all of the time. So what I'm asking the board to consider is to designate or task somebody with the project of taking a look at the outward-facing materials and making sure that it's actually inclusive of not only the people that live in the community, but also our students. So about inclusive language around gender identity and pronouns, but also our use of words like citizen. So, and when it, because I believe that everybody who lives in the township of Piscataway can come up here and speak, but our board information says citizens can speak at public meetings. And we know that there is, we need to be paying attention when we're saying citizens versus a resident, or when we're saying people who live there. We need to be, I want us to be more careful as a board because we are so thoughtful about so much else. And this is an area, little bit, little bit of work, bigger returns. And it's really hard to argue with, particularly when there's a person who's standing in front of you saying like, you know, we're not necessarily being included. And I know we have students who are also looking for adults. They're looking to us as, you know, this board for, you know, will I fit in in a professional context? And the answer is yes. So we want to make sure that what we are showing to them is you belong here. We recognize you. You're included. Little bits of changes. So thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to speak, and I look forward to getting to meet all of you and getting to know you a little bit better as I continue to participate in these meetings. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Anyone else wishing to speak? We're glad to see you. Okay. Not a problem, not a problem. Okay, with that being said, can I have a motion to close public session? Can I have a second? Sure. All in favor?
Aye.
Public session is closed. Fiscal Plan and Operations, Dr. Connors?
Be resolved, following motions identified as items A through AD be approved as presented.
Second.
And I would just.
Yeah, I saw you were ready to say something.
Quickly, no, have our business administrator, it's a June meeting, and just that there's a lot here. Right, there's a lot here. That's basically what I want to say.
Now that you've got me thoroughly stumped, okay.
For the item E. Is it? Yes. Is it possible to give that to a high school student? There's a group which runs a recycling program for e-waste, and they collect items.
You're saying there's a high school group that collects e-waste?
Yes.
I think it's only cell phones.
Well, laptops.
Oh, at least they take all. Oh, okay.
We can inquire with the high school principal to see.
Thank you.
This, this stuff has, is of no value, so it certainly wastes. So we can inquire with the high school principal.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that up.
My point was, it's not normally this long. It's very long in June.
Even longer in May.
In May, okay.
It's all in your mind. It's baked tissue. Don't worry about it. Mr. Secretary, you can take the roll.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Dr. Nelson?
Yes.
Ms. Rivers?
Yes.
Mrs. Sargado-Cowen?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stafford?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Dr. Connors?
Yes.
Ms. Cherry?
Yes.
Okay, carry.
Policy, Ms. Smith?
Be resolved that the following motion identified as item A be approved as presented.
Second. Mr. Secretary, you can take the roll.
Dr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Sidebar, people, sidebars.
We're, yeah.
Excuse me.
Ms. Rivers?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stafford?
Yes.
Dr. Connors?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Sargado-Cowen?
Yes.
Ms. Cherry?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Curriculum, Mr. Patel?
Yes. Be resolved that the following motions identified as items A through D be approved as presented.
Second. Mrs. Secretary, can you take the roll?
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Ms. Rivers?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stafford?
Yes.
Dr. Connors?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Dr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mrs. Sargado-Cowen?
Yes.
Ms. Cherry?
Yes.
Ms. Cherry.
Pupil Service, Dr. Nelson?
Be resolved that the following motions identified as items A through D be approved as presented.
Second. Mr. Secretary, take the roll.
Ms. Rivers?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stafford?
Yes.
Dr. Connors?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Dr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mrs. Sargado-Cowen?
Yes.
Ms. Cherry?
Yes.
Motion's carried.
Administrator and auxiliary, Ms. Stratford? Be it resolved that the following motion identified as items A through E be presented, be approved as presented.
Second.
Mrs. Secretary, can you take the roll?
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stafford?
Yes.
Dr. Connors?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Dr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Ms. Rivers?
Yes.
Mrs. Sargado-Cowen?
Yes, excluding item E.
Yes, excluding item E.
And that should be the same thing for Prashant?
Oh, yeah.
I will mark you as well, Prashant, standing on A.
He's excluding, he's accusing himself from item A.
Yes. Accepting all A through D excluded for E, thank you.
And Ms. Cherry?
Yes.
The motion's carried.
All business.
Yes.
To the left of me, to the right of me, who wants to go first?
I think I should go first.
Go ahead.
No, you go first. I don't know where my paper is.
Master board certification. I still haven't forgot. We're nowhere in the middle of a superintendent search. I want to remind people that I will be contacting people this summer and going into the fall because since we got our board certification, we only need five and a half more credits. And a credit is basically an hour of a discussion before November, December of 2026. So we're in a prime position to keep educating ourselves on topics. And the two topics that, you know, I was going to pick was the board's role in policy and governance by policy. And we'll get the field representative New Jersey school boards in and we'll keep rolling. And perhaps by October, if we're, if we're at the workshop in Atlantic City, we could be receiving our master board certification. But what we do is we basically, we keep educating ourselves on governance.
Anything else, Tom?
Nope.
Okay. Madam President and school board members and the public, as we all know, we are in the process of hiring a new superintendent. And I'm charged with that committee. What I, what I can, it's a very confidential, you know, search that we're conducting right now. Many things I cannot share, so I will share with you what I can. Our consultant with New Jersey School Boards, Mary Ann Friedman, has provided me the statement in response to the superintendent search, there were 39 applicants that began the process, which resulted in 36 completed applications. Two candidates did not complete or submit the application. Two applicants withdrew as they, as they had accepted other positions. So that left us with 33 candidates from the New Jersey School District, one from Georgia and one from New York City School District. 35 strong candidates. And your school board has been diligently working at interviewing, reviewing applicants' resumes, CVs, transcripts, et cetera. So we are all taking out that time to make sure we do find the best candidate for Piscataway. And with that in mind, we have completed our first round of interviews. And we hope to be progressing in the search. And I will be back at you in July with more information.
Thank you, Nancy. Thank you for all the work that you're doing under the meeting, everyone. I want to thank all the school board members for all the hours and time you're putting into this search. I apologize, but I don't, that I'm conflicted. But I see your hard work and I'm cheering you on from the sidelines, saying you got this, you got this.
We feel it.
Now, is there any new business going to the left of me? He went first the first time, he went first this time.
I just want to say that it's been a very busy few weeks.
It's all in your mind.
We, we all have been running around to see what's happening in our schools, right? And a lot of that things go like even, it's like, it's smooth. What I got to see was, I was at one, I'm not going to single any event out, but I was at one of the events and things didn't go as planned. And that is when I learned that these kids can improvise.
Quick.
And, and it was amazing to see that event, even though it didn't go as per plan. It was awesome to see our students.